Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, October 10th, 2023, meeting of the New Land and Planning Board. We'll go ahead and get started. Okay, yeah, all right. So first off, we have to make a couple of appointments. Emily and David, can you both sit in tonight as voting members? Great, thank you. What else do we have? Oh, a quick reminder for folks who have been, or if you haven't been here before, we're being taped, just so you're aware, that this will be publicly available after today.
No guarantees on that first night I'm taping it. We don't know how it's going to turn out, but we're trying.
In theory, in theory, you're being taped. Okay, great. The first thing we need to do is to look at the September 12 minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And this is the point in our meeting when we ask for public comment on something that is not on the agenda. So is there anyone here who has something they'd like to talk about that is not part of our agenda tonight? Okay, thank you. All right, the first item we have on our agenda is the Slider Property Public Hearing, Site Plan Review. We have a kind of a number of things that we'd like to work through tonight on this. The first thing that I'm hoping, I'm just going to kind of lay out what we hope will be the order of things. We hope that we can accept that this is a complete submission. We hope, we'd like to determine whether we think this is a development of regional impact. Just to note, this application was not deemed as such before, and there are parameters around that. We'd like to have the applicant get a chance to speak and to have the board ask questions. And then I think it makes sense for the board to talk about the possibility of a site visit. I think it's, given the complexity of this situation, that it would be really helpful for us to be on the site, looking at all of these issues. We've read the public comments that we've had a chance to read, we've heard from some of you, but I think it would be really helpful to actually be there. To that end, it's my thought, and we can see what the board thinks, but that it would make sense to hold off on some of the public comment tonight until we can do a site visit. And the reason I say that is because I think we can best understand what the comments pertain to if we've been there on the site rather than just having driven by, as I'm sure we all have. So I know a lot of people are here and they'd like to speak, and you're prepared to speak, and I understand that, and we don't want to drag out the process unnecessarily, but we also, and we want to be efficient, but we also think it's important to do this right. And so that's just my thought, and again, we can talk about that with the board. And then the only other thing I wanted to flag that we can talk about as a board eventually is whether we think we'll need to determine, I guess, if we need to have a third-party engineer review the work of Peter Blakeman here. So, all in due time, but I just wanted to kind of lay out the order of operations here. Okay, so in order to, first off, accept that the application is a complete submission, we'll need to have a motion for that.
So we've received the, the application. You know, obviously, the board has the ability to request further information throughout the process, but we do have the, the application packet with the site plan supporting materials. We received the preliminary stormwater summary late in the day this afternoon, so I'm guessing some of you didn't even see your emails after 3:00, but I do have hard copies here for you, too. And so that's part of the packet at this point. It's also on the town website under the meeting materials. But so to get this started, we'd be looking for a motion to accept the application.
I move.
I move we accept the application.
Second.
Yeah. Okay, well, that was motioned second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. Thank you.
Sure. So at this point, the board members, you need to determine whether or not you feel that this is a development of regional impact. As Tim mentioned in 2016, when this property was initially before the board, it was not determined to be a development of regional impact. But just to remind you what the criteria are that are set in state law, are whether the, the first one has to do with housing units, so obviously, this is not that. The second is proximity to the borders of a neighboring community. The third criteria is an impact to the transportation network. Fourth is an anticipated emission, such as light, noise, smoke, odors, or particles. Fifth is proximity to aquifers and surface waters which transcend the municipal boundaries. And the sixth are that there's an impact on shared facilities, such as schools or solid waste disposal facility.
Doesn't seem to me that anything has changed since 2016 in that regard, so I think we can determine this was not a review of regional impact.
Thanks, Bill. Anyone else on the board? Want to opine? I would agree with Bill, but I don't think that it merits regional impact, but I don't know if any others want to weigh in.
And so just to remind for the public's benefit, because this is probably not something that you've heard before, when something is a development of regional impact, there's just further notification process for additional subsequent meetings as far as notifying the town offices in the neighboring communities and notifying the Regional Planning Commission. The Regional Planning Commission has a regional planning committee that they try to convene before you continue on in your process, although I will say that can be difficult for them. They cover 27 communities, and their commissioners are all over, and so they don't always, are not always able to meet the timeline that we have locally, but that is the process. It doesn't necessarily change anything else we do. Our process continues on from here, just as long as we've sent out the additional notices and given the towns and the Regional Planning Commission the opportunity to participate.
I do not feel that this has any regional impact at all, given the criteria that we just articulated. I don't think this piece of property fulfills that at all.
Thanks, Paul. Anyone else? You guys are good?
I think we've determined so.
Yeah, okay, great. Okay, so I think the next step for us then would be to hear from the applicant and/or their attorney, and if you would just use the mic, that'd be great.
I think I've got that on. Is that working all right? Can everybody hear me?
It's a little low, not because...
Let's see. Any better?
Feel free to raise the lectern if you need to.
Well, I'm not going to fiddle with that because I might drop out, so. So, good evening, members of the board. I'm Rob Dietl, obviously, legal counsel for Tim and Lizette Slider, who are here with me tonight. And also, we have with us Pete Blakeman, who is a civil engineer who the board may be familiar with, who's helped us in looking at drainage on the property. I want to go over a few things with the board tonight and give you sort of a roadmap of what I'd like to discuss. And the first is the procedural history. This is an application where that's uniquely important to the board's evaluation. The second is a discussion of what the Sliders intend to do with the property, what we're specifically seeking in terms of an amendment. And the third is to frame a little bit, for the benefit of the board, our perspective on some uniqueness of this application in terms of procedurally how it gets reviewed as a site plan amendment, which I think will speak to some of the concerns that we're aware that two-of-butters may have with the property. So I'll dive right in. In 2016, 2017, Tim and Lizette sought to buy what I believe at the time was known as the Trainer Farm, or the Trainer Property. And they came before this board in December of 2016, seeking a site plan approval, really with a holistic view for what they wanted to do with this property, and pretty unique. They were looking for a site where they could raise their family, where they could live in close contact with the land, which is important to them, and where they'd be able to support their horticultural business, garden life. And to have a comprehensive property that met all of those needs was a rather unique thing, and they found a great property in this one. At the time, it was three lots, about 22 acres in total. And you may be familiar, there's about a four-acre portion in the middle which is carved out for their residential property. The other 18 acres are under a conservation easement held by the Osborn Sergeant Land Trust. So at this point, what I'd like to do is, if everybody has their application materials in front of them, I think it'll be helpful to look along as I discuss this. I'm holding what's at Appendix 39 of your application materials. I'll wait for Adam to... Right at the very end, Adam, last document, last page. So this, what we're looking at here is the current site plan that we're seeking approval for, but it gives you a general sense of the property. And so in 2016, the site plan sought a number of things which were approved. In the, what is on the right-hand side of your screen, it's the southern end of the property near where Shaker Street along Mountain Road, that portion of the property. Approval was given to build two barns, four hoop houses to have employee parking on-site for garden life, which was discussed at length, to have materials stored in that area, and to have an access way that crossed the property. And at the northern end, on the left-hand side, which is now an orchard, that was contemplated as being an area for livestock. I think the specific numbers were like four cows, Tim and Lizette can correct me if I'm wrong, goats, pigs, some chickens, you know, an actual field with livestock in it. And so this approval that came out of that discussion gave them the ability to realize their vision of what they wanted for the property, and it was instrumental in their decision, obviously, to be, to buy it and to pursue the redevelopment of the site. The house, which is now where they live, was its whole own story in terms of challenges with renovations and everything with that. But if we fast forward from 2016 to today, a lot has happened in terms of how Tim and Lizette intend to use this property. And some of it has been organic, some of it has been just a change as they've gotten to know the land better. But they encountered some real challenges, perhaps the biggest being with trees that were on-site. So in your materials, you've got a picture that goes way back in time, probably to the '40s or '50s, which shows this area as cleared, but in the intervening years, it had grown up into largely a forest. And in the spring of 2017, a microburst came through which leveled a large portion of trees on that site. That creates all sorts of challenges. I'm not a forester, so I'm not the person to really speak to them, except for the fact that that meant a lot of trees had to go, and it meant that a lot of the other trees that remained behind no longer were viable, standing in isolation. And if you were to go out to the site, which I think we will be doing, you'll see that even the trees that remain have struggled at points in terms of their crown and the canopy and everything. But, but, so you fast forward from 2016 to today, what has fundamentally been accomplished on the site is that they have restored what was historically a very productive pastoral field back to what it was previously, as originally contemplated by their 2016 amendment. What hasn't happened is that they haven't built the structures that were contemplated. And instead, the area that was envisioned for barns and hoop houses and the like has instead become really sort of a mixed-use staging area for the farm operations. And so when you look at this site plan that I have in front of you, you'll see there's an access road that comes in off Mountain Road, and it leads into a sort of square rectangular area leading up to the hoop house. That is roughly the configuration today, not exactly, but approximately. And that is used for a number of things. So there are materials that get stored there, there's equipment that gets stored there, Garden Life has employees that park there. It really is what you'd see in many commercial farms. It's a multipurpose area that they use. So that, that brings you from the past to the current. The other piece I didn't touch on was the area to the north that's listed as an orchard. That was the area envisioned for livestock. Livestock is a very intensive, you know, it requires a lot more work, frankly, than having an orchard. And so what, what you'll see as we discuss this application is really, there's been a decrease in the intensity of what was contemplated for the property ultimately. You know, they've gone from livestock to orchards, they're seeking to reduce the number of structures that were out on-site. The other piece here is, there's a pond that's depicted on this site plan. The pond was discussed in 2016, but it wasn't explicitly part of the approval. Tim and Lizette are seeking to build that pond, which is going to involve the need for an AOT, Alteration of Terrain Permit, with the State of New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. And when that process unfolds, that will involve the need for a very detailed drainage study as part of it, mapping of the soils, but it's really dependent on what happens here tonight in terms of, or through this application process as to whether or not Tim and Lizette are pursuing that, because it all is holistic, and I think you may be picking up on a theme here, but the operations on this site all sort of fit together, and they're what make it work as both a farm and to support their business and to support their vision for the property. So what we're looking to accomplish through this process is really to update the 2016 site plan approval. Your town regulations, as I'm sure you're aware, and your site plan review standards provide that when there is a site plan approval and there are subsequent changes that are encountered, whether they be minor or major, the process is logically to come back to this board and update. And I pause on that and I highlight it because this is fundamentally an amendment application. We are looking to take the intensity of what was improved back in 2016, adapt it for the way that we envision the property to actually be used going forward, and to thereby amend the approval that has already occurred. I say that because while there's a lot of information that I'm throwing at you tonight, this application, there's a lot of things it is not. And one thing it is not is it is not an opportunity for a butters to relitigate the 2016 approval that occurred. It's also not an application for litigating the conservation easement that's out on that property. Tim and Lizette, as you might imagine, are in regular contact with the Osborn Sergeant Land Trust. They are aware of this application, they're aware of how the property has been used, and you'll see, if you haven't already in materials, that at least two of the butters are concerned about that conservation easement. And with all due respect to the process here, and without jumping the gun, I want to be clear, that conservation easement is not part of the purview of a site plan amendment application, which bears noting. So that's the, the summary of where we are in this process, and I do think that a site plan, or a site visit will be helpful, because I think what you'll find when you go out and you look at this property is that it is a beautiful property. I was sharing an anecdote earlier. I came up to visit my parents who live in town over the summer, and I drove by with my 10-year-old son, and without knowing anything, he just organically said, "That's a cool property." Because it is. It really is a beautiful sort of gem within this neighborhood from my perspective, and I think most people would look at it that way, and I think the support that I believe is here tonight will speak to that. So that's an opportunity for you to see with your own eyes. I've done a lot of telling of what you're going to see. I think when you go out there and look at it, you'll see that what we're discussing is backed up by it, so. Pete Blakeman is here if there's questions about drainage on the site. He received his report today. He primarily speaks to two areas on the property. One is an area where water drains off near, I believe it's the center's property, the abutting there. And then another is, you'll see when you're out there, the topography slopes down towards Mountain Road, an area down by the corner of Mountain Road. But in both instances, no adverse conditions out there. So Pete's here for that. Tim and Lizette, I don't know if there's anything you want to say at this point? I'm happy to turn over.
Yeah, can you use the mic? Yep, thanks.
I can, yeah. Well, thank you, first of all, for hearing us, and we are welcome to any questions and would definitely enjoy a walk to see what we've done. Yeah.
I think the, the process that from 2016 to now, just in all candor, it has been more involved and more difficult than we initially anticipated, but we're really proud of the work that we've done to restore the land back to active farmland, and that's still our, our end goal with this. And actually, it's already become a more productive property, and looking forward to seeing it rather, like, further the maturity. I think what we've experienced in the past few years is, is the big change, but it's just going to get better with some time. So yeah, so we believe we're doing it also in a less intensive way. I know that big change was an initial big change, but we're, we're, you know, eliminating really, we have chickens, but we're not planning on doing cattle or any intensive livestock. And we believe we've, we've set the stage for the property to be healthy and productive going forward, and want to continue to produce, you know, plants, shrubs, ornamentals, agricultural project, products for off-site use and for the community. So we think we're still in line with those goals. But we are welcome to any questions.
So normally now, we would have the, the report from myself and the rest of the town department heads, though I had a preliminary meeting with them. We were waiting until we had the, the stormwater analysis to, to really compile the thoughts from the department heads. We got that late in the afternoon today, so we were not able to, to meet today. So I will reserve the, the staff report to the subsequent meetings, and I'll set up that meeting with the department heads hopefully later this week or early next week.
Great, thanks, Adam. So now I think it makes sense for the board to, or think about questions that you might have. Does anyone have questions they want to start with? Yeah, go for it, yeah.
Tim, I'm particularly interested in how you see the growth of the, the business here. I mean, much of what we've talked about and was contemplated in the original site plan was a relatively modest use of this property for the business, which seems to have been a lot more successful, and that's good news, I guess, but it's not really clear from this schematic either, where the business is going to operate in the future and what your plans for, for that might be. I understand that in the interim years here, it's been a work in process and has, has grown, but where are you headed with the business? I think you have to come up here, unfortunately.
Yeah, just, otherwise it doesn't record. Thank you.
Well, more or less, we did grow a little more than obviously ever planned, took a different route in my industry and ended up needing to go to have a, you know, a, a business with my wife. So we needed to compensate for a little more than what we were planning before, which led into having two more crews with Garden Life. Thankfully, we have been able to get the help and, and have the, you know, people to do the work, and, and plenty of work there is, but it, no, it was not planned, but it's just something that life threw at us, and we, to pay the bills, we, we need the, you know, that structure of doing it now, but no, there's no further, no further of anything, obviously, to, to get bigger, because there's no need for it, but I know before, but before I was on a completely different life track, you could say, so.
So is the brown area, is the, excuse me?
Rob, do you want to be on the microphone?
Here, why don't you take this one? Here's one right here.
I just think it'll be easier than everybody jumping up back and forth. So Selectman Helm, in terms of your question, so Tim answered in terms of sort of the practicalities of how the business has evolved, from the standpoint of site plan review, you may have noted in our application materials, for instance, we discussed that, you know, maybe someday in the future, a barn might be contemplated out there. What I want the board to understand is that what you're seeing on the plan is what they are seeking approval for. And we fully recognize that if in the future there were opportunities to grow the business, or if there was a desire to expand structures on-site or do things like that, we'd have to come back here before this board. So, you know, this is what, what we've tried to do is give the board a realistic understanding of how they intend to use the property for the foreseeable future.
So maybe to clarify that, then the brown area on this scheme is going to be, continue to be used in the same way you're using it now, is that basically? Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the board?
You know, it would be helpful to me if, if we're looking at this schema, if you just, and I've driven by this property more times than I care to count anyhow, so take us through just exactly what is there, where it is, what you're doing with it, and if you have any future plans, where they are and what that's going to be.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, I think, as we're, yeah, talking about it here, so that the brown area that was referenced earlier, do I have to press the button?
No.
As long as it's green.
As long as it's green, yeah.
So yeah, the, the light brown area, I mean, we tend to, I think a lot of this has to go back to how we're using it now, and that it adapted, you know, it changed from that original 2016 plan. So that area that the marker is on now, that kind of light brown, that is kind of a utilitarian area where we stage parking, some materials. The burn pile is there now, as well as the compost pile, and we did try to keep those things more centrally located, because we realized that the buffers have come down around the land, and that was not our intention, so we're trying to keep things more central and, and out of view as best as possible.
A lot of stuff did predict which way we had to do it as well. I mean, there is certain, there's an area of wetland, there's, you know...
Where?
That dotted line coming through, and so we've stayed clear of that. DES marked that, yeah, in, in the beginning years of us clearing the fields, we did have them out to delineate any wetlands, so we've stayed, yeah, stayed clear away from that. And then the light green area all around is really where Tim's been doing a ton of work of just trying to improve overall soil quality and getting better seed down. I mean, we probably have over $10,000 invested in seed at this point through droughts when we first started, but we're just trying to improve the overall soil, and it's been hayed for the past few years.
What goal? What's the goal for that particular?
So that's where we're trying to improve the soil quality, and as of now, we're, we want it to remain as a hayfield, hayfields.
So I think, you know, it's a great question, and it's why I'm looking forward to everybody having the opportunity to walk the property. But to give you some more sort of specifics, so the, the orchard area on the left-hand side are my, I guess it's probably everybody's left, that right now, if you were to go out there, there's a series of trees planted neatly in rows, fruit-bearing trees with fencing around it to keep wildlife out, all in keeping with best management practices in terms of farming. That area to the back that says homeowner-managed forest, it's a deceptively large area of forest that they have kept as a forested space. And then when you move across the property, it really right now is rolling fields with, I mean, each time I went out there this summer with wild turkeys all over the place running around, and it leads you into that tanish area, which has become sort of organically where they have this sort of mixed-use purposes for it. And then the land where you see the hoop house locations, it starts to drop off from that end naturally down towards Mountain Road. And, and the topography overall, when you look at old USGS maps and everything, it slopes, you know, from the orchard area across the property gently towards Mountain Road. And then, of course, there's the central area with the home and the livestock area, which, you know, when you're out there, you'll see, it looks all part and parcel of one organic functioning property, so.
And the darker green color?
So the dark green color is where they're contemplating putting in a pond, and that's what I made reference to of the AOT process. So that will require state review, and I... So that will require state review, and I don't mind sharing that we would envision that as a condition of approval, that it would be necessary that Tim and Lizette obviously obtain all necessary state permits for the construction of that pond.
Other questions from the board?
So if you do not get approval for the pond, what do you plan to do for some of the water areas that are, that are not flowing in your property?
So when you say not flowing, and Tim and Lizette, correct me if I'm wrong, there have, they have not encountered problems with stormwater out there with perhaps one exception. They did experience some water that they had to contain going sort of across the property towards, like the, you can see the stone wall sort of jogs at the northern end or at the edge of their property there. And you have some materials from a butters that show like a drainage pipe that was put in. That was ultimately mitigated and managed by their efforts. And Pete Blakeman, if you have any questions on that, can speak to what he's observed out on the site. But you'll also see it with your own eyes when we're out there. We can walk down along that stone wall area. It's not hard to access and you can see.
So the purpose of putting a pond in is what?
Is for irrigating plants in the orchard so that we're not taking from, currently we have an irrigation system hooked to our well, and it's only going to last so long with the amount of plants we're irrigating.
And doing other wells is just robbing from other areas so we can, you know, take surface water and.
Excuse me, Mr. Paul Vance. On, on the pond thing, I read, I think in the original application, it was a gray water pond. And it's not called that now. Is there some difference? Is there developmental difference or something to that?
Not that, not that we know of, that our original intention was to just collect the surface water to, to fill the pond.
I think, Member Vance, probably what your, what your question is really speaking to though is it's not water that would be used for a drinking source. So that's generally where we refer to like gray water. It's not, it's, you know, it's impounding stormwater and can be used for purposes of agriculture and things like that, but they're not going to be tapping into it to cook or bathe with or anything like that.
Presumably it would also.
Presumably it would also be available to the fire department as something that they could draw on. They can put in, I, I forget what the term is for the infrastructure, Tim, but they can, yeah, a, a stub that the fire department could tie into.
Do you know what the overall volume capacity of the pond is? I mean, if it's particularly dry summer, will that allow you to use it exclusively?
That's what we don't know yet. Now I'll be going through the whole process with state and, yeah.
To determine whether we have the requirements.
We've had some preliminary discussions with Michael from NRCS, but it takes some more studies of what we'd need to do for the amount of water we'd need and factoring in different weather conditions.
So I'm aware of the orchard and the, excuse me, the hayfields, but can you just talk about what things you intend to grow just generally?
In the orchard itself? I mean, that's where we're.
Just across the property, yeah.
Yeah, so hay in most of the open fields now. I know, we've started in the orchard experimenting with Huga culture, which is a, a practice of using materials from the site and kind of making a small, like it's only about this high, but berm windrow that composts on its own. And you add different organic materials so that you can actually have more vertical kind of gardening. So we, we doing that in the orchard and then we'd also like to grow some more ornamental plants in there.
It's more for the ingrats, the, the pumpkins, gourds, besides all the apple trees, all the fruits and, and that. Onions, potatoes, I know, a bunch of stuff.
Yeah, and you guys are leaving out, and I left it out as well, you'll see there's a plant seedling area depicted down the corner there, so that's an area where they could, you know, have immature plants grow and be able to be used offsite. But really, I mean, the fast, one of the fascinating things I've seen with Tim and Lizette's business is that they can draw on and use this property in a less intense way than almost any other farming operation would because of the nature of the things that they want to grow out there. You know, they're not looking to use it in an intense manner like tilling the soil and growing corn or something like that. It's more focused, as Tim and Lizette said, on things like ornamentals and things that they can use as part of their business, so.
As far as growing the pumpkins and the gourds and things, what's the timeline on that that you plan to implement this year?
So, yeah, we're, we're new farmers, so we're learning. My garden is doing great in the four acres, but putting it into an orchard's a whole another ballgame. We found that turkeys like to take out pumpkin seedlings. So Tim spent the better of a week planting pumpkins, gourds, squashes, and I think we only had, sorry, this is public record, but a couple of them come up.
The ones in the compost pile looks pretty decent.
Yeah, the ones in the compost pile are doing great.
It came up, it's just something wanted it more than we did, so.
Yeah, so we found that we'd have to do things of like some covers on them, and it's just like frost covers. It's a really common practice, but that would, that would prevent turkeys and other things coming in and literally taking the supple new seedlings that are coming up. And so, so we tried this year. So we will try again next year.
And I think, I think everybody will see when we're out there, the orchard is the area where perhaps there's the most active growing going on right now onsite. And I think you guys have been making good progress with that orchard area.
Yep. Yeah, I think we're up to 80 apple trees out there. And we're trying peaches, pears, plums, and we're trying also some, yeah, cherries and things that are more heritage that people used to grow way back when.
So would the hoop houses, would the hoop houses be used to, for the plant starts that would get planted out there, or would they be for a separate grow operation?
Plant, plant starts and then also rotating some crops in and out, like tomatoes. It would elongate our season to be able to grow things in there that will be covered so that we could actually keep things going until closer to Christmas.
So as your garden grows, you have, you have access to parking, so you're going to be selling these products from your home?
The, the short answer is right now, no.
Yeah.
It's not intended to be like a pick-your-own type situation. I mean, I think you guys maybe would have a little roadside stand or something, but it's not immediately contemplated as being a retail operation or anything like that.
Yeah, we don't plan on putting up a barn and selling, you know, lots of produce out of it. Majority of what we're growing now sustains our family. We do a lot of preserving, but I, and we would honestly like to find someone else that could sell it, like working with Spring Ledge or something like that.
But mainly the community and, and customers.
So you're not going to need a huge parking area for, for the public to come in?
No, we don't see that parking area getting any larger than what it is now.
And how large is that parking area now?
I think, Pete, didn't you say it's about 4% of the area approximately? If, I mean, if you look by scale, those hoop houses are what, 96 feet long or something like that? So it's roughly, roughly 200 by 100 or so is what's being proposed. Yeah, it's, you know, it's difficult when you look at a plan like this to get a sense of the scale, admittedly, because this is a big property. It's, you know, it's 22 acres overall. So that's why, you know, pictures worth a thousand words. When you're out there and you see it yourself, you'll have a much better understanding, I believe, of, of what we're talking about.
So none, none of the products that you are, you're going to be growing are going to be for sale for, for the town or the community to come in and buy?
Will you see a small, like, and that's the thing of like, I know in the town regulations, you can have a small farm stand, but we're not looking at, it's, we would want to, I mean, we don't have it figured out, maybe that's more of an honest answer, but we don't plan on generating a parking area for people to come and us be reselling the products. Like I said, we'd rather work with a partner of some sort that would, that already has that infrastructure.
Pumpkins and gourds we take offsite to decorate, so it's, yeah, no need of that.
And, and one of the things, and blame me if there's any confusion on this point, is, you know, I think part of the lesson for Tim and Lizette frankly was when they were here in 2016, trying to lay out the vision of what they wanted to see for the property long-term. And so, you know, as with any property, things can evolve over time, but what we've strived to do tonight is to give you an application that reflects the present plans with the full understanding that if, if things were to ever evolve, if it were to, you know, if down the road, I wouldn't have ever foreclosed the possibility for Tim and Lizette that they might use it in different ways, just like any other property owner, but as a commercial farm, then they'd have to come back here for that. So right now, the focus is on having things grown on that site that support their business and their garden life design and their own personal needs and perhaps, you know, friends and family and things like that. But it's not to have a retail operation on the site.
Could you just, I, I, I'm sorry, I don't know garden life or exactly what you do other than horticulture and whatever. But I think I read in there you were contemplating maybe as many as 10 to 16 employees coming there, getting your trucks. I, I don't see any place for storage of the trucks or landscaping equipment or things like that. Are those contemplated or am I in the wrong pew here?
I wouldn't say you're in the wrong pew. What I would say is that right now, you're right, there is no, there are no structures for storage and we aren't seeking approvals of structures for storage. The way that area gets used is very light intensity right now in that, you know, you have employees coming onsite and they leave their cars, but, and you have materials that are stored there. For instance, they have an excavator, they have some heavy equipment and things like that, that can be parked in those areas. But this is where, you know, there's a distinction here between, this is a commercial farm, but it's not a commercial farm in the way that I think somebody off the street might think of a commercial farm. And what I mean by that is it's not heavy industrial agriculture out there. It is low-touch, low-intensity agriculture. And so, you know, maybe down the road, there is a need for storage and they'll come back and they'll seek approval for that if there is. But you guys, my understanding is you haven't experienced that need yet, so.
No, and I don't think we want to either. Like, that's the whole point. That's even what Garden Life's business is, a low-impact type of business. So yeah, they really go hand in hand that way.
You know, it's, it's interesting. So I've done a lot of work in my career in front of land use boards and admittedly have not done a ton with regard to agriculture because it doesn't come up all that frequently that an agricultural use will come before a, a planning board. Part of the reason for that is our state statutes define agriculture, they do two things really. They have an incredibly expansive view of what agriculture is, and your, your zoning ordinance actually adopts explicitly the state definition of farming and what agriculture is. So agriculture takes a wide range of forms. But, you know, beyond that, and this is a fascinating thing, and I'll admit, I actually didn't realize this before working on this application. When you look at RSA 674 and 672 and they speak to why zoning ordinances exist, there are some things that our legislature has determined the land use board should take into account. And one thing that they've explicitly called out is that zoning exists in part to promote agriculture. So you end up with, it's a use that doesn't frequently get structured review because it needs to be so flexible by its very nature, and that's been reflected both in the, the local ordinance and at the state level, so.
Other comments from the board? So I think the board should determine whether we want to do the site visit. I'm guessing that the answer will be yes, but I'm, would like to make that determination and then also in context or in conjunction with that figuring out in terms of public comment, because like I said at, at the start of this, that I think it might make sense to have public comment after we've had the site visit in terms of context, but I would like to hear from the board on that.
There's, I know it, just going to contract our meeting, but if there's something to be said for, for us hearing something from the public before we go and see the place, because that gives us a sense of some people's perspective on what, what their issues are. And we're going to have to answer to that at some stage of the game, so. I, while I don't, I, I would hope that the, the chair would respectfully enforce our, our limit to five minutes, which I think we could hear.
Yep.
What the public has to say.
Okay. What do others think?
Well, as to the first point on a site visit, I would be in favor of that.
Okay, I think I'm seeing heads, but can we, we're all in agreement that a site visit makes sense?
Yes.
Okay, so let's set that quickly and then we can move. It sounds like there's an interest in public comment as well beforehand, and I, I hear your point, Paul. I just didn't want to get too far ahead without the proper context. But I think talking it over with Adam before, I think that the 24th, which is the date of our next meeting, we're thinking at maybe four o'clock, recognizing it gets dark earlier these days and that people have busy work schedules, things like that. Does that work for the board if we tried four o'clock on the 24th before our meeting that evening?
I'm not going to be here then. I won't be here to the meeting either. I'll be away that week.
Yep.
But that's no reason to change it.
Yep, not the site visit. We don't have, we don't have mobile recording equipment.
David and Emily, any, does that work for you guys? That work for you? Okay, all right.
And just for what it's worth, we, if, if a future date is better for the board, we have no objection to a different date. We'd like to facilitate, Member Gorman and anybody else that's part of this process to be able to be there, so.
Our next preset meeting day after that is November 14th. If that's a better date, Bill, did you say you were unsure on the 24th?
The 24th, I was having surgery, so.
I think that takes precedent.
By 14th, you should be all right.
I don't want, I don't want to put this off for everybody else because of a personal issue.
I'm just concerned we're going to be sort of at the bottom of our quorum. If Paul's unable to be here and you are unable to be here, we will have just four. So that means that if something happens to one of you, we would not have a quorum. We, without them being here tonight, it's hard to rely on them, so.
I, I think you should go ahead with the 24th and I will make every effort not to be a problem.
Does the 24th work for you as well?
I guess what I would say is that, you know, there's, we very much want the site view because I, I do think of the property speaks for itself. But part of the reason why I mentioned the scheduling is I'm mindful to Adam's comment about quarums and what I really want to try and avoid, partially just because of the expense involved in this process, is a scenario in which we schedule, we get everybody out there and it turns out we don't have enough members of the board present to act on the application. So if there's no prejudice or, or problem for everybody, I, I think my personal preference would be that we try and seek a date where we can, you know, make sure that everybody that's here tonight is able to be present, if that's possible reasonably.
Yeah, I think that is the next available date. I mean, we could do the site visit on a non-planning board meeting day, if that's.
The only downside to that is then we lose the sort of fresh perspective when we come into the meeting.
Right.
Generally, they're thinking why we do it at the same time. We could, I hadn't thought of that, we could try the 23rd. I don't know, you're, you're out of town then as well, Paul, right? Are you out of town on the 24th? Are you out of town on the 23rd as well?
Yeah, I'm out the whole week.
Okay.
I'm fine on the 23rd.
I can't do the 23rd.
Okay, you can't, okay, all right. So, scratch that. So what's the board's pleasure then on if we tried to bump to the 14th?
This is November now we're talking about?
Yep. Mind you, it'll get darker, well, it'll be dark freakishly early, so.
We might wanna do three o'clock.
Yeah, we might need to, yeah, exactly. So we'll have to move it up probably.
So you're on the 14th at four o'clock?
Well, we're gonna probably do three o'clock because it's later in the year.
The time will have changed, the.
It changes on the 5th.
Yep. Does that work for the applicants?
That's fine on my end. You guys get with that?
Okay.
And thank you guys for accommodating that.
Yep. And does that works for the board, I'm making sure? Paul, you think that's good?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Great. Do you wanna talk a little bit about how it would play out, Adam?
Yep. So, as members of the public, you are invited to attend the, the site visit, but given the, the difficult nature to actually hear in a, a large group, members of the public don't participate during site visits. You're welcome to listen and to walk along, but it's asked that you hold your questions until we're back into a room where everyone can actually hear each other and that Trina has the ability to actually take the, the meeting minutes and the notes because it can be quite difficult. So the board members have the ability to ask questions during site visits and they'll sort of stay, you know, in central and then everyone can kind of be around them so that you can hear to the best of your ability, but generally we'll kind of go over things again once we're back in the room. But you are invited and more than welcome to attend. It's an open public meeting.
So then, it sounds like the board would like to hear from some folks tonight. Paul alluded to the idea that we generally ask people to limit comments to five minutes and if you have heard, we also ask if you've heard from, if you've heard someone else express an opinion that you would also like to express, it's helpful if you just say, "I agree with so-and-so" and we don't have to necessarily rehash that. So just in the interest of time. So if somebody would like to speak, I'm gonna pull one more mic up to the lectern and if you can just come to the, oh, thanks, Adam. If you can just come up to the, to the podium and state your name so we have it for the record, that'd be great.
And if the microphone is off, it'll be red here, just press the button, turns green.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to speak finally to this matter. It's been years that this has been going on, that we've attempted to get this before the town. I have to say Attorney Deedle's done an amazing job of making the presentation for the sliders today and it's amazing to me that we were able to dance around a lot of the subjects to minimize exactly what's going on in the property. Again, I'll just touch on some of the points. He brought up the, the, the impact of animals on the property. The animals, if you review the 2016 site plan, those were gonna be three or four head of cattle or possibly goats, possibly chickens for personal use. There was not going to be a huge impact for the animals. And in 2016, actually what happened is the sliders got everybody together, or at least some of the neighbors together, and they made a presentation. They made a presentation to those neighbors by presenting the 2016 site plan. Adam, could you just scroll up for me if you don't mind, to the 2016 site plan?
Sir, would you say your name and?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Andrew Librano. I'm the largest side of butter to the sliders. I do wish that the property was divided up more so that we would have more than just myself standing up, but as such, there is no buffer between it. We have full view of the sliders' property and all the activities that are going on. For the 2016 site plan, as you can see, the, the promise that was made at the meeting with the butters and also that was made to the, the planning board was that there was no more than 50% of the trees that were going to be cleared. We have a 22-acre clearing of the property. I know that Mr. Deedle, or the, the sliders have made the claim that there was a microburst that occurred on the property, but again, the board has all the satellite photos of the property immediately after and immediately before the 2017 microburst that occurred. And if you look, the clearing of the trees only took place within the boundaries of the sliders' property. It doesn't affect any of the butters to the rear. I have a large portion of trees to the left side, didn't affect any of my trees. We actually witnessed, and we provided copies to the board, of a tree company coming in and clearcutting the trees. So the characterization that the trees came down on their own, it's just, it's simply untrue. During the 2016 site plan, we were promised, and it's immortalized in the 2016 site plan, that all the butters, depending on which portion of the property you were on, were either going to get a minimum of a 50-foot buff, privacy buffer, or a 40-foot privacy buffer. The 50-foot privacy buffer, it was actually 50 to 125 feet and it was 40 to 150 feet for all other butters. The 50-foot buffer is denoted on the site plan, or 40 to 75, I guess it says, was supposed to be a long mountain road and Wilder Lane, the property's on Wilder Lane. Everybody else was supposed to get a minimum of 40. When you view the site plan, you'll see there is no buffer. There is an eight-foot fence, which if I roll my window, I don't roll my windows, if I put my shades down more than four inches, I get to stare at the fence. The fence is there, it's oppressive, it's a Jurassic Park fence, it's not attractive at all. And for folks whose business is the beautification of other people's properties, they've done nothing, nothing to at least afford us any kind of privacy buffer. The 2016 plan, if you look at it now to the far left, you'll can, you can see that they denote some trees there. The original plan, as was promised to us, was supposed to be a section of fence followed with trees and bushes in the middle as a privacy buffer and then a secondary fence because their personal use livestock was going to be grazing in that field. Out of nowhere, the 2023 plan approves, and I know it's kind of confusing to me today that we're here for an approval of a site plan, but 90% of the site plan for 2023 is already done. The only 10% that hasn't been completed is the fact that they mention in the site plan that they're going to improve the road further into the field. It sounds to me like they're extending the road further into the field. On the far bottom-left corner of the 2016 site plan, there was a break in the stone wall that the gentleman who used to hay that field, used to use to get his tractor in. The sliders went ahead and amended the soil, they brought in crushed stone, they created a driveway, and to the Jurassic Park fence that they've created, there's actually a gate there. If you look on the 2023 site plan with the road, the road on the 2023 site plan ends at the side of the right side of the field. It actually does extend, as the photos the board was provided, actually already does extend a third of the way into the field and is lining up for the driveway that was unpermitted. It's unpermitted, it was not approved by the town, they did not seek approval to get the driveway put in, and subsequently now, a rock has been dropped at the end of it to say that it's not really a driveway, yet. It's not being mentioned in the 2023 site plan where this road is being improved to, but as a common person, you can see it's headed for the gate, which is going to put it within 40 feet of my property line, which means the trucks that they're going to be utilizing to take the, the produce out of the field is gonna be loaded into and driven alongside the property with no privacy buffer whatsoever. The other issue that Attorney Deedle touched on but quickly moved away from, the parking lot as it stands right now, we're being told that the town approved them to operate their business on the property. If you review the 2016 site plan, they were approved for three parking spaces for employees of the landscaping business, and it is a landscaping business. The farm and the landscaping business, two completely different entities. The landscaping business is actually registered with the Secretary of State as a landscaping business. As such, they were approved for three parking spaces for employees of that landscaping business to work in the hoop houses that were constructed. They never got constructed. To this day, they still don't exist. However, on a regular basis, there are 10 to 12 cars parked in that parking lot and they're actually seeking, in the 2023 site plan, they're seeking 16 cars now to be parked there. In their 2023 application, they actually put that employees spend very little time, which tells me that those employees aren't going to be farming on the farm portion of this property. It says they come, they load their trucks and they leave, they spend less than 30 minutes there. I can tell you now that's exactly what's happening. The conservation land, the land that is under conservation, is currently being used as a park and ride for employees. They come, they drop off their, their personal vehicles, they take the company trucks and they leave to go out into the community as far as Concord to do landscaping work. Is that really, is that really what we want for conservation land? And if Attorney Deedle says, "We're not gonna, we're not gonna, we're not gonna relitigate the easement, we're not gonna relitigate the 2016 plan." I'm not looking to litigate it, I'm asking for you folks to enforce the 2016 site plan. We were told this was going to be a cute family farm and what now, for the first time with the 2023 site plan, we're hearing it now it's a commercial farm. Nowhere in the 2016 site plan was, were we told it was going to be a commercial farm. Now all of a sudden, it's a commercial farm. They're also telling folks, "In the field, it's gonna be open to the public." They're not saying that they're gonna sell to people, but they're going to let people into the field to come and indiscriminately pick. When you go do your site review, I ask you to look at the proximity to my house. We're gonna have people working in the field picking fruit, we're gonna have people from the public coming in and picking fruit. And they've gone so far to say that the, the line of trees that are on the inside of the fence, that's good enough, that's good enough for your privacy, you don't need that. I still look at the fence out my window, when they drive their four-wheelers around the perimeter of the, of the, of the property, I still have to watch and listen to that. They've taken and they have put watering stations on the fence posts, which are less than 12 feet, they're 11 and something, from my property line right outside my window. So obviously, employees or people who are accessing the water are gonna be staring inside my house, inside my backyard. So I just ask that the board, when they go out and do the site visit, that they took those things into consideration. The road right outside my property. I believe regardless of Attorney Deedle's indication that farms are really exempt from the planning board, I really do believe that it's not carte blanche, it's not a blank check. And one of the other reasons, other things I just wanna go back and touch on, a question was asked about the parking and what its intended spaces were. If you read the 2023 site plan, not only are they looking to expand the parking lot or expand the number of cars, they're also asking for two additional staging areas. There's no description of them, there's no location of them. And the question, or actually the statement, you've heard Lizette Slider already explain to you, yeah, staging areas are areas that we park cars, that we dump materials or store materials. So now at least we have a definition of, their definition of what a staging area is, they're looking for two additional ones. So besides expanding the parking lot, on conservation land, they're going to also add two more parking areas into the, but we don't know where those are. There's no, there's no denoting where those are on the site plan. So I just ask, if nothing else, when you go out and take a look at the property and realize that, I understand that they're trying to make a buck or two, I get it, I completely get it. The problem is, it's also the place where other people live. And unfortunately, because of my proximity where I am, I'm in a front-row seat to watch this all happen. I just want my privacy, I just want my quiet and I don't want people staring. It's a security issue for me, it's a noise issue for me, I'm not against farming, contrary to the narrative that they have set up by sending out letters and talking to people and dropping letters off and emailing folks. I am not against farming, but I am against a business running and I am against people standing outside my window looking in. I'm against all those things. So I ask that the board deny this application, at least when you review it, take a look and see what, see what we're talking about as far as the residents who live there. Thank you for your time, I do appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public who would like to comment? Yes. Please come on up and just state your name if you would. Thank you.
I think I'll take this down. Tom Pollicino, 302 Wilder Lane, New London. I'm gonna give you the 50-cent version here. Number one, I'm happy that the drainage study was completed, look forward to having it reviewed. I would hope the board would consider having it reviewed independently. Yet someone had mentioned it, I think you, Tim, at the beginning. The placement of storage is something that Andy Librano did not mention. In, in my instance, there are some mounds of, of dirt. Those mounds are really high, estimate about 30 feet from the original ground level. The microbursts, the wind gusts, they blow, my windshield gets damaged. Smoldering, still there, didn't replace it. I've got grandkids that come and play. Last thing I need is for any one of them to get hurt. I pull them in when I see the wind blowing up. Move the storage, I'd like to have a height limit and I'd like to have the storage moved back. I think Andy said it very, very well. The business is at the heart of what we're concerned about. The butters, if you take a look at agriculture, horticulture, we're all for it. My wife and I just finished visiting the, the botanical gardens and the public gardens in Halifax. And just gorgeous stuff. Ducks, gazebos and bursts of color all over the place. That's what we want. What we're concerned about is the business and the business that expands. As Andy said, and I won't go into detail because he, he did a good job, they come, they spend about maybe 10, 15 minutes and then they leave. It's being used as a parking lot and a storage area. Landscaping, when we reviewed the definition of agriculture, landscaping does not fit into agriculture nor horticulture. It's an independent activity that's going on, on the property. So our concern really focuses on the, the use of the land and where, where agriculture and horticulture is involved, no objections. We do have concerns about, about the business and its expansion. Andy's reference to a buffer, I couldn't agree more. A, a buffer would go a long way to solve an awful lot. And I think that if, if you do a site visit, I would hope you would also come maybe visit and see what's happening on a butter's property, properties, if that's appropriate. In particular, at Andy's, view it from his spot, come to mine and some of the others who might express concerns today. I guess that's about it. I think you got the 50, the 50-cent tour. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other comments from the public? Thank you. Just to make sure you state your name.
June Pollicino, 302 Wilder Lane, New London. These are questions for the planning board to consider. One, Garden Life's application states that it is a commercial farm and horticultural business. As of September 3rd, 2023, there was not one mention of agriculture or horticulture on the Garden Life website or Facebook page. Landscaping and landscape design are mentioned throughout. What are the commercial farm and horticultural activities being conducted by Garden Life workers when off-site? How many workers are there and what specific agricultural activities are they engaging in onsite? Two, why are workers not engaged in agricultural activities on the conservation easement allowed to park their cars there all day? Why are those workers being allowed to park their vehicles in an area specifically represented to this board in the initial application as proposed field production? Three, the conservation easement deed specifically prohibits a parking lot. Why has the board allowed one? Four, Article 6, Section O of the Town of New London Site Plan Review Regulation states, "The site development shall not generate or create undesirable and preventable elements of pollution such as noise, smoke, soot, particulates, or other discharge into the environment which might prove harmful to persons, structures, or adjacent properties or to be in violation of state or federal laws." How was it determined that the parking lot should go from 30 to 16 cars, 25 if you include truck, company trucks and the, our equipment are included in that? What consideration was given to the regulations and the conditions noted above? Five, why are you allowing equipment not being used on the easement property to be stored there? Six, Article 7, Section D of Town of New Six, Article 7, Section D of Town of New London Site Plan Review Regulation states, "After the planning board's approval of a site plan, it shall be the landowner's responsibility to ensure that construction and site development does not deviate from the approved site plan. Board of Selectmen or its designee shall determine if the changes is major or minor. Minor changes may be approved by the Board of Selectmen or its designee. Major changes shall require the submission of an amended final site plan review and approval by the planning board before construction can proceed." The major deviations on the easement with no prior planning board approval include: One, an additional driveway in Egress to Shaker Road. Two, destruction of trees. Three, construction of a working road on the property. Four, storage of heavy equipment. Five, the creation and expansion of an employee parking lot on land specifically designated as proposed field production. Six, unauthorized drainage that directly impacts an abutting landowner. Seven, no wide buffer from both Shaker and Mountain Roads. Eight, stockpiling of materials. Why did the board allow these changes to take place? Seven, why hasn't the promised buffer with the Lebranos been provided, especially after seven years? Do you feel that it's overdue? Eight, Article 6, Section G of Town of New London Site Plan Review Regulation states, "The applicant shall provide written assurance from the town Public Works Director and, if necessary, a consultant selected by the planning board, that provisions for handling surface and subsurface waters, storm drainage, and melting snow are adequate and will not adversely affect abutting properties or town facilities. Drainage onto other properties shall not be increased to such an extent that such increase would impair the reasonable use of that property." Do you believe that when neighbors raise and extend the slopes of their properties and install drain pipes to drain water directly onto neighbors' properties without that drainage study, that it is consistent with this article? Is it consistent with farming activities in compliance with best management practices? Nine, Article 6, Section L of Town of New London Site Plan Review Regulation states, "Consideration for adjacent land. Proposed location and height of buildings or structures, walls and fences, parking, loading, landscaping, and snow removal shall be such that it will not interfere or discourage the appropriate use of land adjacent to the proposed site or unreasonably affect its value." Do you believe that this regulation was intended to prevent damage from being done to neighbors' property by flying stones or neighbors being hit by the storage material? Ten, do you believe that the cars, storage, boat, trash dumpsters, port-a-potty, makeshift storage trailer, and construction equipment, et cetera, in plain view shown in the attached picture, which you should have, maintain or enhance the scenic beauty from Shaker and Mountain Road? Thank you for your time and listening.
Thank you very much. Other comments from the public? Yes, sir. If you can just come up to the mic.
Doug Holman. I own and operate the Lake Sunapee Country Club, and I am the single largest abutter to this property. When the board first approved this property, I thought it was great. I thought it was a, a really good use for, excuse me, for a piece of property that, that really had gone to seed. I think they've done a great job. They have certainly worked hard. There's certainly a need for the service that they provide to our community. They take care of my flower beds. They do work for us at the club. They probably do work for some of you. I don't know. But, but there's a lot of people in the town of New London that don't take care of their own flower beds. And Tim and Lizette do. Change is hard. And that's what, and that's what really the complaints that I'm hearing are all about is change. As far as I know, property rights are still property rights. If you own a piece of land, you ought to be able to do with that piece of land just about anything you want, as long as you're not really impacting your neighbors. What is that property zoned? Is it ARR? And what does that stand for?
Agricultural, rural, residential.
So it's actually zoned agricultural, and that's the first part of the zoning. Agricultural. And agricultural, as I heard Mr. Deedle says, is a pretty broad definition adopted by the state. As far as I can tell, they certainly meet that definition. Now, we run a golf course across the street from this property. We've been running it since they started the construction there. And they haven't complained about us hitting golf balls in their yard, and we have no complaints, no complaints about the noise or anything they're doing over there. And golf is generally a pretty quiet sport. It's a, you know, it's something that you don't really want, a lot of, a lot of noise going on when you're, when you're trying to play. I've never heard a complaint. I've never heard anybody say anything about this property. So to make a long story short, I think, I think they're doing a great job. They're a young family, trying to raise kids in the town of New London. They're exactly, exactly what we want in this community. And instead of trying to drive them out, we should be embracing them and finding ways to make their business more successful and to make them feel more welcome. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? There will, of course, be more chances to speak when we meet on this issue in the future.
So if there's no further comment from the public or from the board, then the next step for the board would be to adjourn this evening, leave the public hearing open, and continue to the, the site visit on November 14th at 3:00. And then upon the completion of the site visit, that meeting would be adjourned and it would resume here at 6:30 PM that evening in Whipple Hall. And once we are back in the room, that's when the actual site visit dialogue would Sure. I mean, it makes sense to, to ask.
So one thing I mentioned earlier was the notion of a, hiring a third-party engineer to review the drainage study. I don't know if the board has, it's obviously not an inexpensive undertaking, but I don't know if the board has an opinion on that.
Well, and if I, if I may, in terms of, our position would be at this point that that's premature. There's a lot of expense involved in a third-party review, and we've heard a concern raised about drainage. But I think when you're out there on the site, you will see, it is an overblown concern. You're going to hear me saying something over and over again, which is, let your eyes speak for yourselves. When you guys are out there, you will see. And if the board ultimately determines that it wants a third-party review, we won't object to a continuation of this application to allow that time after. But I'd ask that the board first go out there and see the genuineness of this before it undertakes that expense on my client's behalf.
What's the pleasure of the board regarding to that?
So perhaps Pete could use some of the time for the site plan, or for the site visit, rather, to sort of walk us through the, the actual in-person impacts of AOT and what that means and, and what that all looks like when we're actually on the site.
I would just add, as I understand it, this has not been reviewed by the departments at this point.
We had a preliminary meeting before the, the last planning board meeting, but we didn't have all the application materials at that point. So we'll meet again before the 14th.
Yeah, I would just suggest we defer that until we've heard from the department.
I agree with Paul.
Yeah, okay. Are either of you, okay, okay with that if we, and you as well, Paul, sorry? If we defer on that till after the site visit?
Okay. So then we'd be looking for one of you to make a motion to continue to site visit at 3:00 with the public hearing resuming at 6:30 on November 14th.
Thanks, Adam.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, standing? Okay. Okay, we're going to continue the meeting now, so if you can hold your comments so you get to the hallway, that would be great.
Hi, how you doing, Timmy?
Okay, folks, we're going to go ahead and try to continue the meeting, so if you can take your conversation in the hall, we would appreciate it. Okay, so we need to talk about the capital improvement program. This is a public hearing for that, so we'll need a motion to open the public hearing for the CIP. Okay. All in favor of that? Aye. Right, so, I guess we didn't really need a motion, but it's fine. All right, so do you want to just do a little walkthrough?
So I think most of you have seen the updates of the CIP, as the committee has sort of kept you in the loop throughout the process. This year, on the CIP committee, we had Bill Helm, Paul Vance, Tim Parity, Paul Gorman, David Royal, Charlie Kelsey. Is that everybody?
Yeah.
Yep, okay. Charlie Kelsey was the, the representative from the Budget Committee. So as we undertake this process every year, we met with all of the department heads and discussed what their needs would be over the course of the next 10 fiscal years with trying to keep the threshold on expenditures over $50,000, which, that was a change this year. We've been at a $25,000 threshold for more than a decade, and given that costs have gone up dramatically, a lot of things that are under $50,000 don't rise to the level of being a capital expense. So you will notice in the plan, there are some things that we consider capital pieces of equipment, like smaller tractors and things that Public Works Department owns that are still in there even though they're under $50,000. And a large portion of that is due to the ability for departments to be able to plan their expenses. And so though it does not match exactly with what we gave them as a guideline, they found it as a useful tool to use in their planning, and ultimately, that's what we want this to be used for. For the department heads, the Budget Committee, and the selectmen, all find this to be a useful tool. And on that note, you won't see this in the PDF version because it's, it's sort of impossible to PDF it, but there is a more useful backend to the CIP now that really doesn't have a public application necessarily, but that we will provide to Budget Committee members and selectmen. And, I mean, I guess it's a public record if somebody wanted it, we would provide it. But where all of the columns have been categorized and can be sorted, so whereas the traditional CIP is organized by department, so you can go through and see, you know, when the library's roof needs to be replaced, which is like every year, a piece of their roof needs to be replaced, but it walks you through each department. In this capacity, you could go in and organize by building maintenance, or an infrastructure project, or a vehicle or equipment. You could also organize by departments. You could organize by different expense levels. Trying to think of other ways to query, really, you know, any, any variety of, of ways of the different columns and fields, so that hopefully department heads can start to use this as more of a tool, but so that also the committee members can use this as more of a tool to see, you know, if we're buying multiple similar pieces of equipment that are maybe, maybe one fiscal year apart, you know, maybe it means that though a fire department utility truck and a sewer department utility truck are two very different utility pickups, it might mean that you get a better deal at the dealership going to buy two fleet trucks. And so maybe something gets swapped a year, you know, we can get an extra year on a grader, and then we get the utility truck that year, or whatever the example may be. So this will allow them more flexibility to hopefully manipulate the data to be more useful. So this year will be the test to see, one, if people find this useful, and then, two, what are the tweaks we can make in, in successive years to make it more useful? So that is a larger backend. This is the, the very sort of public-facing version that you'll see on the website. As far as projects, I'll let the, the committee members also jump in, but I can't say that there was any one project that was a significant new project that came in. I think one thing that changed was the amount of money that, that we understand will probably be needed in order to accomplish the Conservation Commission's goals. In previous years, we've had it in there, half a million dollar need in 10 years for the land that they would like to purchase. Unfortunately, as you are all well aware, the land costs have skyrocketed in the last few years, and given the nature of the land that the Conservation Commission is typically interested in, we didn't think that that was a sufficient number for them to be planning with. This is not a funding source, so this does not tell you where that money is coming from. This just identifies what need they see in the future. And then it's up to the selectmen and the Budget Committee to decide, do they want to put a little bit of that money away each year, every now, for the next 10 years in a capital reserve? Do they prefer to wait until there is a, a land need in front of them and then bond it, or whatever mechanism may be available then? And so this document does not get into that. It's simply trying to lay out a roadmap as far as what those costs are going to be down the road. Another larger project, which I'm sure is no surprise to anybody in this room, is the new police station, which I believe in some capacity has been on the capital improvement plan since, we looked this up at one point, but 20, like 15, I think, is when it first appeared. Obviously, the, until there is a concrete plan, it leaves the CIP committee in a tough spot to actually attach any number to that. So there is a wide range for the land and the planning costs, and a wide range for a new facility. And we don't really know where any of that will head, but, you know, the, the selectmen have, as I'm sure all of you attended their forum, they are working on that, and that is an objective of theirs. And so this committee felt that it was important to include those ranges, even though they are not con- are not concrete numbers within the plan. So those are the sort of highlights. I'll let other committee members jump in with anything that they wanted to add to that.
Adam, I assume that after tonight's hearing, we will then present this to the Selectmen at their next meeting. The next meeting being the day before we work on the budget, so it would be extremely helpful if that's done that way. And I think there's going to be a fair amount of interest this year in talking about what's happened here. The $50,000 floor has already been talked about at the Budget Committee at some length, so I think that's going to be met positively. Both the Selectmen and the Budget Committee have been spending more time this year talking about capital expenditures, the, the funding side of things. So I think, if at all possible, we do need to take this forward to the Selectmen on the 26th. That same meeting, which is going to start earlier than our normal meetings, we're going to be entertaining a proposal from a consulting firm to actually do some planning work around the police station activities. So I think the two might actually dovetail quite nicely.
And so, Bill, that's the Thursday, the 26th?
Thursday, the 26th, and I believe we've agreed to start meeting at 4:30 that day to accommodate both the consultant and this process. And then we will begin at 10:15 the following morning in Whipple Hall and go as long as we can go to try to work on the budget this year. Instead of having a series of short sessions every time we meet on the budget, the Selectmen are going to attempt to do a large part of the budget work in one long day, and, and all the department heads will be there and so on. So it's an attempt of a different process, and having this information, which for that, for that meeting would be very helpful. And I assume after tonight, you can arrange for it, make sure the other two Selectmen get, get it.
Correct.
I know it's posted, but.
Right. And so typically what happens is after it gets adopted by the planning board, I provide Kim with the document tomorrow, and then she sends it out to the Selectmen ahead of time. But we'll plan, Tim and I can plan to be there on the 26th.
The calendar just happens to line up very well.
Yep.
This year.
Works perfect. Okay, 26, 4:30. So, Bill, what time do you think the CIP would?
The, the reason we're starting at 10:15, incidentally, is because Colby Sawyer College is having a, a meeting before that to, to inform the town about some of their activities, and we thought that people might be interested in that, so we weren't going to try to double-book.
Yep, perfect.
Do you know what time on the 26th that you expect the CIP portion will come up?
I, that, that's not, not in my control.
Okay.
I bet you could have some influence if you wanted to.
Maybe a conversation could be had. Okay, thanks. Yep, so David, you got a question?
So, my question is to statement that, that being part of this committee, I thought it was very helpful to hear of all the department heads come up and present their, their needs and their budgets. This is the first year, I think, that the planning board has put in $100,000, because for a study for Main Street, for the safety of motorcyclists and pedestrians, and especially because Main Street's going to be having some work done on it and sidewalks, we thought this would be a good time to have a study done for what's best and what's safe for our, for our people using Main Street. So this is the first time we, as a planning board, has put in as a budgetary item also. Thank you.
That's a great point, David. Thank you. Other comments from the board before we do public comment?
Yeah, I thought it was a great process, so thanks, Adam, for all the hard work on that. And it came out well.
And I'll say that if the Selectmen's all-day budget session works out, we may try this for CIP next year, because every year I underestimate how difficult it is to wrangle all of the department heads to six different meetings.
Yep. Good point. Okay, so this, I'd like to have the public comment portion of the CIP. Are there any questions or comments from the public on this capital improvement plan? Okay, well, that's pretty great. So then we would need a motion from the board to adopt the CIP, and then that would get passed along, as Adam indicated, to Kim and then to the Select Board.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt what the President presented.
Great. Thanks, Emily. David seconded. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstaining? All right. Thank you. Congrats on the CIP work to the group.
So I just have a couple of quick updates. Some of you may have seen, there's been some information circulating regarding the financing round for Twin Pines. So they have a targeted, I don't want to say deadline, but the financing round is targeted to make grant announcements in December now. So hopefully that actually provides them with a little bit more clarity, versus we've been sort of in this ambiguous, you know, ambiguous, we're supposed to hear in July, no one hears a word, sort of waiting out there. So fingers crossed that that will be, you know, successful for them. And nothing new to report on New London Place. Still, you know, they're still waiting in for their, their well contractors to drill their test wells, so stay tuned on that. And then just a reminder that next week, the Housing Commission will be meeting with their consultant for the first time to discuss potential proposals to our accessory dwelling unit ordinance. So that will be at 6:30 on Tuesday night, the 17th, in this room. I would, you know, understanding that anything that they end up coming to a consensus on, they're going to approach this board to hopefully support for a zoning amendment season. So if you guys are available and interested, it'd be great to have you attend and, you know, participate as public. Anything else update-wise that I can think of? Anything that you can think of, Bill, from the Selectmen? Okay. I think the next meeting, we have a new site plan application on, for Michael Hansen's property at, is that 10 Main Street, where the house got taken down? So he's moving forward with building an office building there to house his, his engineering and bridge design firm. So we'll have that. Between, yeah, between Frank Enzalone's office and McGrae and Nichols on the vacant lot.
They came for a conceptual.
Well, it would be for Mike, and he already owns it, so he, I believe he's taking it off the market at this point. So we have that, but we will plan to probably do a little bit more zoning amendment work that night, since I anticipate our first November meeting, when we have site visit and folks back, probably being a little bit busier and not necessarily a time to dedicate to zoning amendments, we'll try to reserve some time at the next one, and then maybe that last meeting in November. And then if we need to come up with a subcommittee time outside of meeting, we will do that. Just a reminder that our schedule does not align with Thanksgiving this year, so we do have two November meetings. The last few years, our second meeting has been the week of Thanksgiving, so we have not met twice in November. But the way it works this time, we still have time for a meeting on the 28th, so.
Got hosed.
Yeah, well, the zoning board made out on this one.
Cool. Thanks, Adam, for the updates. Any other questions, comments from the board? Or from the public, all four of you? Okay. Well, we just need a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks very much, everybody.